Item twenty-five, the regular board meeting will come to order. Start with item number one, the invocation by Mr. Dexter. Y'all stand.
Yes, ma'am.
I pray, dear Lord, we thank you for the gift of this day. We thank you for bringing us this far into the day and we thank you for bringing us this far into the school year. Thank you for the accomplishments that will be acknowledged on tonight and the work that continues to be carried out to make us better in the future. Lord, we ask that you bless this school system in its entirety, all those who labor therein, and all those who are served by this system, Lord. And we ask that you would endow the board with your divine wisdom to make decisions that are the most beneficial for all involved and that you get the glory from all that's said and done. And we ask it in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
In the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, recommendation to approve the adoption of the minutes, regular board meeting held Tuesday, February eighteenth, as printed in mail to board members and published in the weekly news official journal of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I so move that we adopt the minutes.
Got a motion by Mr. Robin and a second by Mr. Jay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries to adopt the minutes. Item number four, the action item is resolution of respect to the late Queen Harold Alexander, retired teacher. Mr. Keep.
Okay. Whereas God in His intimate wisdom has called to her eternal resting place, Queen Harold Alexander, retired teacher, whereas Miss Queen Harold Alexander has devoted fifty-three years of service to this educational system. Miss Alexander received a Bachelor of Science from Ramblin' State University in nineteen sixty-one, Master of Education from Louisiana State University in nineteen seventy-six, and a Master's plus third degree from Louisiana State University. Whereas Miss Alexander began her teaching career at Bedlam High School, she then went to teach adult education at night, Dunbar High School, Simsport Elementary, and Bortle Longville, Plocheville School. Whereas this board feels that her passing to her eternal reward should be noted at this time in recognition of the unselfish service she rendered to the cause of public health for so many years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Volsparish School Board expresses its sincere regret in the loss of this beloved former employee. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the Volsparish School Board and that a copy be transmitted to her family. And I so move.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Keep and a second by Miss Jill to adopt the resolution of respect to the late Queen Harold Alexander. Any, any comments from the audience? Any comments from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution of respect passes. Resolution of respect to the late Fay Dakota Gilery, retired teacher. Mr. Robin.
Whereas God in His infinite wisdom has called to her eternal resting place, Fay Dakota Gilery, retired teacher, and whereas Miss Fay Dakota Gilery has devoted twenty-plus years of service to the education system, Miss Gilery received a Bachelor of Arts from Louisiana Christian University in nineteen sixty-four. Whereas Miss Gilery began her teaching career at Hessler School, teaching first grade, she then went on to teach at Cottonport Elementary School. Whereas this board feels that her passing to her eternal reward should be noted at this time in recognition of the unselfish service she rendered to the cause of public health for so many years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Volsparish School Board expresses its sincere regret in the loss of this beloved former employee and be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official minutes of the Volsparish School Board and a copy be transmitted to her family. And I so move.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mr. Robin and a second by Miss Jill for the resolution of respect to the late Fay Dakota Gilery, retired teacher. Any discussion from the audience? Any comments? Any comments from board? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution of respect passed. Item number five, recognition of student of the month for February two thousand twenty-five.
Welcome. We are so glad to have y'all here tonight. We have got some, um, we've got some good honors tonight. We've got some information tonight, but this is always one of our most favorite parts, the student of the month, the teacher of the month. We appreciate what you do for us. We appreciate you being here tonight. And we are gonna start with, um, Miss Jill is going to do, uh, student of the month.
Student of the month for Bunky Elementary Learning Academy is Raylan Payne. Raylan's in fourth grade. His teachers are Miss Hannah Lemoine and Miss Alicia Brown. Raylan says, "I am an active member of Bunky Elementary Learning Academy 4H Club, Beta Club, and I have maintained honor roll status since first grade. I am also active with the Bunky Gym to Boys Club. My hobbies include playing the drums at church, singing in my church choir. I enjoy playing video games and making TikTok videos. I love sports and I am a star football player on the football and baseball teams in my community. My future plans include going to college and studying to be an engineer. I choose, I chose this career because the money is good." But most importantly, he wants to make his parents proud. "After attending college, I plan to invest my money in stocks and bonds and retire early." That one needs a frame.
Teach my kids.
Okay. Uh, Mr. J, you got fun part?
Tajee Washington.
Tajee Washington.
You got fun part?
Yes, ma'am. He's good.
That we were spread out all over. Come see me.
Tajee's teachers are Miss Shobbi Gash. His favorite subject is reading. His academic achievements and school activities include mastery, has good behavior, letter naming fluency, and counting fluency. His hobbies are playing with toys and his brother and playing video games. When he grows up, he wants to be a police officer. Congratulations, Tajee.
Okay, this is for you. Congratulations. Okay, Mr. Leon, you've got, um, LaFard.
Yes, ma'am. Brandon Dodge.
For all you people in the hall, don't leave just yet. We don't wanna take no more pictures. So if you give us just a few minutes, there's a couple of seats here and there and somebody in the back will pull you a seat out of one of those offices if you need. Okay.
Brandon Dodge, is he here?
LaFard? I don't think so. Maybe he'll get here before we finish. Okay, um, Miss Amy, you've got Marksville Elementary.
Marksville Elementary Student of the Month is Kenley Richardson. Kenley is in kindergarten and her teacher is Miss Velma Lockwood. Her favorite subject is math. Her student accomplishments is honor roll every nine weeks. Her hobbies include dancing, coloring, jumping on trampoline. When Kenley gets older, she wants to be a teacher. Congratulations, Kenley.
Okay, Mr. Ricky, you got Plocheville?
Student of the month for Plocheville is Miss Macy Meir. Macy is in second grade. Teachers are Miss Mandy and Miss Meir. Favorite subjects, reading, academic achievements. Macy has received student of the month, multiple positive office referrals, and a honor roll each year since kindergarten. She has also maintained benchmark in Dibbles and iReady as well since kindergarten. Her hobbies, Macy loves to swim, travel, read chapter books, play with her dog, and complete creative projects. Her future plans, Macy wants to open her own spa salon as well as become a famous softball player when she's not running her own spa business. Congratulations.
Okay, Mr. Ricky, you have Riverside too?
Student of the month for Riverside is Adley Snyder. Adley is in first grade. The teachers are Miss Carly and Miss Susan. Favorite subjects, Adley loves all of her subjects. She says she loves to learn new things. Academic achievements, Adley is above benchmark in Dibbles. She also grew fifty-two points in ELA iReady. Meeting her typical growth score, she grew twenty-four points in math iReady. Her hobbies, Adley likes to eat, play with her toys, and read books. Her future plans, Adley wants to go to college, become a baby doctor. She wants to help babies feel better. Congratulations.
Okay, Mr. Kenny, you have Vols High.
Parker Goche. Parker is a student out of Vols High. His teachers are Miss Kennedy, Miss Michelle, Miss Leah, Miss Abby. His favorite subject is math. His achievements, honor roll, natural in sixth grade, ELA, leak test, advanced on sixth grade math leak test, perfect attendance. His hobbies, he loves playing his guitar, bike ride, riding his side-by-side, and playing football. His future plans, he's not quite sure yet. Congratulations.
Jill, Bunky High.
Bunky High School Student of the Month is Quintarius Timothy.
Okay, and we will move on. Robin, you have LaSass.
Yes, ma'am. Damian Lally. Damian is in eighth grade at LaSass. His teachers are Mr. Sell, Miss Green, Miss Goche, Mr. Raw, and Mr. Mulrow. His favorite subjects are science, ag, and history. He is an FFA and 4H and a junior beta and deca club. The academic achievements I have made while enrolling LaSass are getting into honors classes, earning middle school in agronomy, and getting top ELA student for the seventh grade. My hobbies are playing chess, hiking, fishing, and stargazing. Out of these, my favorite hobby is stargazing because of the interest in astronomy. There is appeal to me in the beauty of the unknown. Future plans are to go to college and pursue my dream degree in astronomy. Once I receive my degree, I plan to begin working at NASA. My backup plan, should shooting stars, shooting for the stars not work out, it is to get a doctoral degree in medicine and work as a doctor. Congratulations.
Okay, Miss Latisha, you have Marksville High.
Marksville High School Student of the Month is Anisha Reed. Anisha is in the tenth grade at Marksville High School. Her teachers are Miss Jacqueline and Miss Elidia. Favorite subject, English. Academic achievements, school activities, track, basketball, and a member of the Golden Girls. Her hobbies include playing basketball, running track, sleeping and eating. Her future plans, she plans to get her real estate license and go to South Carolina to continue her aspirations of being a basketball player and track runner. Congratulations, Anisha.
Thank you. No way.
Oh, Lord, I messed it up. I told you that.
I don't know.
I was trying to scroll it up.
Okay, let me come back there. I got it. You got it? I don't know, I don't know what happened.
I told you you shouldn't stay.
Item number seven is recognition of two thousand twenty-five Teacher of the Month for February. I'm sorry, didn't do two thousand twenty-five.
Okay, and we're gonna adjust a little bit because Miss Velma is on her microphone. Mr. Dexter is gonna find me where you named parts tonight. Good, okay, and we will start with Stella.
Teacher of the month for Bella is Miss Teresa Goche.
Thank you.
Will you guys come up or you won't come down? You come down. Good, congratulations.
Thank you.
Cottonport Elementary, this month is Miss Gail Harvey.
She taught all of us. Congratulations. Yes, teacher hammer. You coming up, you're gonna be coming up. Stella, you might have to come up here. Congratulations. Thank you.
Cottonport Elementary, this month is Miss Gail Harvey.
Cottonport Elementary, this month is Ms. Gail Harvey.
You taught all of us. Congratulations. Yes, teacher hammer. You coming up, you're gonna be coming up. Ms. Katie, you might have to come up here. Congratulations.
The Fog Elementary, Ms. Kayla LaBord.
She's here yet.
She is.
Marksfield of the Month, uh, Ms. Deborah Hale.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Plocheville, Ms. Daphne. And Riverside, Ms. Madeline Russey. Now for our high schools, Volts High, Kennedy Dozier.
She's at a game. Play Bog.
Bucky High, Ms. Misty Blanchard.
Congratulations. Whoa, 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 it's like.
LaSAS, Ms. Brandy Dupont.
Congratulations.
Marksfield High, Mr. Dylan Juno.
Congratulations.
Good, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Item number seven is recognition of 2025 New Teacher of the Year. Ms. Amy?
Good evening, um, I get the honor of introducing our new teachers of the year. These teachers are, um, certified and then chosen by their faculty and staff to represent their school as the new teacher of the year. So they're in their first year of certified teaching. And I do want to mention, I'm not gonna call names, but we have a couple of these that I'm gonna, um, announce that have been working towards certification. So they started as a para or something else and have worked for a couple of years in our district, worked really hard to get certified to reach, you know, this accomplishment. So, we're so, um, excited and congratulations to all of you. So from Cottonport Elementary, we have Ms. Brandy Williams.
Stand up here with me. Go right down there, how about that? Perfect.
Okay, from LaFarg Elementary, Ms. Abby Barone.
Congratulations. Are we too close to Ms. Brandy?
No, you're good.
Congratulations.
Wait, one more, one more.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
From a Volts High School, we have Ms. Courtney Kater. And from Marksfield High School, Mr. Devin Davis. I hope y'all are all as excited about these flags. So these four competed against each other at the district level. And so the representative that was chosen to represent our district at the state level was Ms. Abby Barone from LaFarg.
That's the good part.
So I want, I want one more with the four.
Do you want one of us? No, you go ahead. Just do what she tells. I'm gonna do what she tells me.
Okay, we got it. And then she won't be to take all?
Um, um, yeah. Well, have them come in. Marksfield is coming.
Ms. Amy.
Oh, same.
No, I did, uh, Kenley. Wait, somebody was missing, Mr. Liam was yours?
That was, uh, Brandon Dodge from LaFarg.
Is LaFarg coming in? So, so, I want Ms. Katina, before we go take pictures, I want Ms. Katina to come talk about her Bay Club state winner. And then, um, we will hear from the Volts 4H. And y'all, this is really cool, so I really want you all, y'all can sit down now. Thank you, thank you. I want y'all to hear, because these are, these are great accomplishments too. I want you to get to hear this, and then we will, um, let y'all all go and take pictures. And then we will get on with the business at hand.
This is item number eight. It's recognition of Cottonport Elementary Beta Club State Winners, first place in fourth grade spelling, second place in fifth grade spelling, and first place in elementary creative writing. Mr. Pinus?
Um, I'd like to say that this is like huge, huge, huge for Cottonport and, um, Cottonport Elementary as well as the community of Cottonport. Um, we're the only F-rated school in the district. And this is like something really, really positive for our school as well as our community. And our students qualify for Nationals. And I was told, and I don't know how true this is, that this is like the very first time that they've ever qualified for Nationals. And we're really, really proud of them and the hard work that they've done and the Beta sponsors as well.
Item number nine is presentation from a Volts 4H livestock show on behalf of the Buckle and Premier Exhibitor Winners. Mr. Justin?
Uh, Mr. Justin is not here. It's, it's my.
It's gonna be Ms. Amy. And we're happy to have you, Ms. Amy.
Thank you.
So as you guys know, usually when we come, I bring my, um, the livestock ambassadors. Uh, there's a, there's quite a few kids that couldn't make it tonight. But I wanted all, I wanted you guys to see, and I wanted to thank you for, um, allowing us to use the barn. We, I brought with me our buckle winners and our premier exhibitor winners. So the buckle winners, um, they'll explain to you, it's for their, uh, species, their overall showing. And premier exhibitor winner, this is for a test that they take within, um, their species. But I'm gonna let them kind of introduce themselves to you. And we just want to say thank you. Thank you for your support and thank you for letting us use the barn.
And maybe when you introduce yourselves, y'all turn around.
Wave at us too, so we can put, so we can put names and faces together.
Carson, you wanna start, huh? Good job, Carson. Congratulations.
My name is Dalton Clausy. I go to LaSAS and I won this jacket for poultry, poultry premier.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Camille Flulo. I go to Volts Public Library School and I won a belt buckle by Penny Supreme Pepper and Isha Power.
My name is Dayton Pennington. I go to LaSAS and I won a belt buckle for overall dairy cow.
Okay, so Ms. Amy, how about they turn around and show us those belt buckles?
Yeah.
We can see those jackets from back here.
And some of them.
Well, I don't know, we might take it. We gotta get close to you.
I could see it, sweetheart.
Congratulations. Thank y'all.
Congratulations, y'all. Congratulations to all of y'all. Congratulations.
One thing I just wanted to say, a lot of, that the reason why a lot of them do not have their jackets is they are, we order them and we present it to them at our banquet. So, and some of those that have their jackets, they have won their jackets multiple years and you can see that, um, it's on there. Also, I wanted them, and they're all kind of a little nervous, you know, but I wanted them to introduce themselves and also tell you where they were from. So we have kids that are here that may go to private schools, but they're from Plocheville, they're from Center Point, they're from Effie, they're from throughout all of Volts Parish. So our livestock and our 4H is affecting all of the youth throughout, throughout our Volts Parish. So we just want to tell y'all thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank y'all for indulging us for a few more extra minutes. Ms. Amy is in the red shirt, and if you will follow her, Students of the Month, Teachers of the Month.
New Teachers of the Year.
New Teachers of the Year. If you will go to her, to the back, she'll take some pictures. Thank you again for being here. I had seen the rabbit pictures. Somehow I didn't see all of the other pictures.
I see a lot, I see a lot of the pictures.
Yeah, yeah. I don't remember Cameron.
Dude, we just got back. We did colonoscopy and everything on the day. Well, we'll find out next time. It was a rough day for him. Yeah, but more so today was rough. Bye, y'all.
Hey, how's it going? Just guess me, I'm like, man, I was so cold in here. We didn't turn it off, we knew, we knew. I know, I was excited when we got here. Yeah, yeah, good. The information. What's going on? I still feel like I'm having a dream. Well, and then tracks start there, so. And Dane has six o'clock, uh, a little practice. With Velma John. You have to ask Ms. Two, but I don't think number 10 is here.
It's not, he's not, he called. I'll announce it since it's on my agenda, but I was gonna say it was canceled.
He's the coach? Well, good. How many girls? At four? Yes, thank you.
Well, like I said, I can announce it and say he was not here, he said he's canceled. That's it. It was just for information anyway.
Mr. Mike, I'm so sorry I bothered you today around here. Her house, her house is pretty hot on the block.
She only left about, what, an hour later?
This key, wait a minute, I'll let it burn.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, the rest of the items. Item number 10, it, these are information items, uh, 10 through 15. Item number 10 is, is, is being removed, but it's, it's a special needs program that, I think it's been canceled. He called me and said it was canceled, so there's no discussion on it. Item number 11 is 2025 Volts Parish Summer Program. Mr. Dexter? Mr. Dexter, the summer program?
Good evening again. Uh, just wanted to kind of brief you on, believe it or not, the time is here, that we're planning for summer school already. Uh, very similar to what we've done in the past. Uh, a few differences. This year, there will be three sites instead of four sites. And, um, those sites will be Bucky High, Marksfield Elementary, and Riverside Elementary. Bucky High will accommodate students from, uh, all of the seventh and grade, eighth grade, uh, each of the attended zones. Uh, in addition, those students that go to Bella and Cottonport, uh, Marksfield will accommodate the students from Marksfield Elementary and LaFarg and Riverside, uh, those, their students as well as Plocheville students. Uh, different from the last couple of years, the grades, we would do grades three to six as opposed to including pre-K to two. Uh, of course, with, with some of the funding, not as free-flowing as it has been in the past few years. We're gonna focus on those students who, uh, need the remediation the most as opposed to just, uh, an open, open session. Uh, seven and eighth grade will be credit recovery as, as normal. Um, and also the high school will accommodate those who need to do lead remediation, which will be virtual. And we will have funding for jumpstart summers. We don't know exactly what it's gonna look like. That's the program we've been running for several years, where the students earn a stipend and credentials. So that will be a part as well. And very similar to the previous years, of course, transportation, breakfast and lunch. And that's basically it.
Thank you, Ms. Dexter. Anybody got any questions for Ms. Dexter? Moving on. Item number 12, sales tax report for the month of February 2025. Ms. Mary?
Good evening. You have the information before you. Okay. I want to focus on the first shade, a blue shaded section, which has the school board taxes. Okay, you're gonna see 494,006,9417. And that would be the one cent. The quarter cent, 123,67422. And the building maintenance, which is the half cent, sales tax. 247,34708 for a total of 865,71547. It's an increase of 20,87986 over February of '24. So the, the month of February. Any questions? Yeah, like 2.47%. Motor vehicle, vehicles was down 5.4%, which is not a big problem. If you want to go to the next page. The calendar year to date numbers indicate an increase of 0.47%, which is slight, but at least it's steady. And then, I'm going kind of fast, so y'all stop me, you need to. And then the final page is the, which that's the one, the page I like to focus on, is a 0.21% decrease fiscal year to date. So we're, we're still pretty much even with last year. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Item number 13, the monthly maintenance report on expenditures. It's, it's here. If anybody has any questions, I didn't see anything that I had any questions on.
We had a rodent issue.
At one campus or several?
I think it was multiple campuses.
None of those, those items that came up that we voted on, there was a lot of, I think termite control and stuff like that.
I was just asking. Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on it? Any more questions? Item number 14.
Mr. Rice said it was termite.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we had a couple of items that would come up in the meetings before that we had voted on. Item number 14, balance sheet and monthly general fund 2024-2025 year-to-date report with comparison. Ms. Mary?
What do we have first? The balance sheet, okay. Okay, so we are slightly less than last year. And I think it's just timing because the revenues and expenditures are pretty much even. So you're looking at $27.1 million in total assets versus 27.8 last year, along with the associated liabilities in fund balance. Any questions? Okay, the revenue and expenditure report. So we're just gonna focus on one, one part of this and then we'll come back later and have something for y'all to vote on. So the year-to-date, yes, numbers for, through January of '25 compared to January of '24. So we look at the revenues and it probably goes to the second page. Total revenues, 28,981,707. And last year, 28,41626. So we're up and most of that is due to the MFP increases and just some local revenues. But we're in good shape there. Expenditures, total expenditures, 20,006, I can't see. Okay, 20,64411 compared to last year, 20,346441. So that concludes the report. Any questions?
Any questions?
All right.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Item number 15, personnel changes.
You have got the report and you've had the chance to look at it. But what I really, really, and I say this every chance I get this week. So I'm gonna say it one more time because we are so proud of the work that our HR department has done and that our people in our buildings have done. I want you to notice that we have no full-time jobs in these classrooms. Our people are all in some sort of program. They've been accepted. They are steady working on what they have to get to get to whatever is next. For some of them, that's a four-year degree. For some people, that's certification. But Delma and her group have worked really, really hard. She isn't here. Y'all will have to pat her on the back next time. But they've worked really hard to get that column where it is and we're really proud of that.
All right, items number 16 through 27 are consent items. We'll, we'll go through them and then we can, we can vote on all of them together. Or if y'all want to, at that time, if y'all want to pull something out and vote on it separately, we'll do that. But item number 16 is request to approve the lease agreement between Xerox Financial Services LLC and Volz Parish School Board Central Office.
Mr. Adrian's not here, so she just asked me to. I don't think we get them one by one, explaining.
That's fine, if, if we don't.
You might just read them and straight on through.
Yeah, I'll just read them all out. Item number 17 is request to approve the lease agreement between Xerox Financial Services and Plocheville Elementary. Item number 18, request to approve the cooperative endeavor agreement between Central Louisiana Technical Community College and Volz Parish School Board to provide dual enrollment courses that will be accessible and beneficial to high school students within the boundaries of the aforementioned school board. Item number 19, request to approve the renewal of Incident IQ, our technology inventory management system from March 31st, 2025 through March 30th, '26, funded with technology funds in the amount of $11,163.32. Item number 20, request to advertise for bids for insurance renewal. Item number 21, recommendation to give permission to bid kitchen hoods for Marksville High School, Bunkie Elementary Learning Academy and Volz High School through the social food service department. Item number 22, recommendation to give permission to advertise for bids for child nutrition warehouse addition to be funded using school food service account. Oh, one. Item number 23, recommendation to approve purchase agreement with Solution Tree Incorporated for trauma-sensitive instruction in the amount of $17,425.20 funded by Title I. Item number 24, recommendation to approve the contract with First Choice Therapy Incorporated for the 2025-26 year, school year for the services of occupational and physical therapy. CPT codes will be billed at a rate of $114 per code entered, Exhibit A. Any hour of other services will be billed at the rate of $87 an hour, also part of Exhibit A, to be paid from general funds. Item number 25, request to renew the contract with Educators Rising Academy for one year in the amount of $6,500 funded by general fund. Item number 26, recommendation to advertise for janitorial supply bids for the 25-26 school year. Item number 27, request to, request to approve the request for overnight travel.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Mr. Jay and a second by Mr. Jill to approve the consent items, number 16 through 27 as read. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent items 16 through 27 passed. Action items from here on out, 28, number 28 is request to approve the ROTC job description. Mr. Dexter?
In fact, if you have the job description for the ROTC senior officer, eventually, as the program expands and, and the Army will kick in their portion as we are planning in the future, you're required to have two. But we're, you know, just in the initial phases. So one of them is a senior officer and we have that person in place. So this is that, that job description that you have included. And we request that you would approve.
Ms. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the job description for J OR ROTC.
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion by Ms. Amy and a second by Mr. Lynn to approve the ROTC job description. Any discussion on it? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The job description passed.
Thank you.
Item number 29, recommendation to approve the 24-25 general fund revised budget. Ms. Mary?
This time I have something for y'all to vote on. Okay, so we looked at the numbers for the remaining of the year. And if you see the blue shady column, those are the recommended budget revision numbers. So total revenues changed to 46,46995. And total expenditures, 45,985994 for a projected surplus of $61,034.
Mr. President, I'll move.
Got a motion by Ms. Amy.
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Robin to approve, the recommendation to approve the 2024-2025 general fund revised budget. Any discussion, any questions?
Good job.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number 30, recommendation to approve the 2025-2026 school calendar adopted by the calendar committee on March 5th, 2025. Ms. Jenny?
Good evening. The 2025-26 calendar committee met on March 5th consisting of representatives from 11 school sites, each with an administrator, regular teacher, sped teacher, parent and student as per policy. The calendar committee unanimously recommended this calendar. Just to summarize a couple things, staff development will consist of three days beginning August 4th. Students would begin on August 7th. First semester ends on December 19th. It would have 73 days and a one-half emergency day in semester one. And second semester, staff return on January 5th with two staff development days and students return on January 7th. There is a staff development day on March 13th. Easter break will occur after Easter Sunday, aligning better with the other schools as well as other districts. The last day for students is May 26th and a half day, last day for staff on May 27th. Semester two consists of 73.5 days, giving one emergency day.
Besides Easter, did anything change too much, I mean, from this past year?
Not much of a change because Easter was moved by the committee from the draft. We had to add a day at the end to make up the required dates.
So we, I'm sorry.
We also don't have a fall break date, but we, we could not fit it in. It's a harder calendar because of just the fact that August 1st is on a Friday. And we need to begin after August 1st not to cause it some health insurance finance issues. So that's actually what made this first semester more complicated.
Keith, you have a question?
So they're not gonna return in January till the 7th, is that correct?
The students would not return on this calendar until the 7th, correct?
And it looks like we're coming back one day after Memorial Day. Right? In May, the 26th?
Kids come one day.
Oh, yes, yes.
We avoided it this year.
Yeah, we really, we really tried to, but the only way to deal with it was either move up the beginning, therefore moving up Christmas, cut Easter. I mean, it's just, there's.
I get it. I think y'all did a good job. Yeah, noted.
We tried.
Yes.
Anybody?
I'll move that we adopt this school calendar.
Got a motion by Ms. Amy and a second by Mr. Jay to adopt the 2025-2026 school calendar, voted on by the committee on March 5th, 2025. Any other questions on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the adoption of the calendar voted on by the committee on March 5th. Item number 31, recommendation to approve a propose, a proposal from moral land surveying to survey Spring Valley 16th Section campsite properties in the amount of $10,500. This will identify the current camp locations and new campsites, locations for leasing. Ms. Ray?
This is just like we did with Garfish and Saline, same exact process. This would be funded out of the 16th Section fund. So we just want to do this.
And we, I'm sorry. And we hope to make our money back with camp leases? I mean, it'll.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And of them all, this is gonna be the one where there will be a lot more identified. That's a huge area out there.
I'll make a motion, I'm sorry.
I've, I've spoken with the land survey about this kind of stuff. And once he gets this in place, he can easily do more if they need. It's, it's a really quick process for him to do one, once he gets all this in place.
Without this initial.
Right, right, yeah.
Good deal.
I'll make a motion, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion, Mr. President.
Got a motion by Ms. Jill.
I'll second.
A second by Ms. Amy. To approve the proposal from moral land surveying to survey Spring Valley 16th Section campsite properties in the amount of $10,500. Any more discussion, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 32, recommendation to approve purchasing a sign to rename Bella Jim in honor of Albert Dossman, not to exceed $11,161. We have not received the other two quotes for the sign, which could be priced lower, but will not be considered if they are more than $11,161. Mr. Ray?
Yeah, this is something, of course, they wanted to do in honor of Mr. Albert. And we just want your approval so that we can move forward with this.
I'll make a motion, Mr. President.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Ms. Jill and a second by Ms. Letitia? Any discussion?
Yes, thank you. So Sharice is working to plan a ceremony for this and we had thought we might get it done by May, but we ran into some issues. So we are still working on this, but I think maybe we're gonna work on our sign, get our pieces together and then do our ceremony in, in the August or September. Yes, so you will get the notification about all that. And you've already voted to do the naming. So just know that we're gonna do a ceremony, but we're gonna do it probably early fall.
Sounds good. Any questions, more discussion? All in favor?
Would be funded out of the general fund too, I'm sorry.
Any opposed? Motion carries to purchase a sign to rename Bella Jim floor in honor of Albert Dossman, not to exceed $11,161. Item number 33, recommendation to approve Wayne Coco as the architect for the FFA camp in Old River. The price for his services will be 9% of the cost of the project. This will be funded by the FFA funds account. Ms. Ray?
Yes, you're all familiar with the, the FFA camp that has been talked about for quite some while. They do have money in the bank, in their FFA account. So we just wanted to start the process of looking at, I do have all the digital files for the work that was done before. I'm gonna send that down to Mr. Wayne and then we're gonna just start looking. Of course, we want to make sure that we can stay within the budget so we don't have that issue. And hopefully soon, we'll be, once the ag teachers and all look at everything and make sure it's just what they want, then we'll be coming back to you hopefully for, with some kind of presentation and then asking you to allow us to take bids.
Okay.
Ms. Jen, I'll make that motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Robin.
I'll second it.
A second by Mr. Lynn. To approve Wayne Coco as the architect for the FFA camp in Old River at the price of 9% of the cost of the project. Any, any questions or comments? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 34, recommendation to approve Cleco Commercial HVAC Tune-Up Energy Program project sponsor and customer agreement with Cleco and M3 Services. This is a Cleco HVAC tune-up program that will be delivered to Vols Parish School Board at no cost to the school district. Cleco will pay M3 Services for all costs associated with the HVAC Tune-Up Energy Program. Mr. Ray?
This is just a program that Cleco is, uh, promoting. Uh, it's an excellent program for us. I mean, you know how many units we have out there. And, uh, if you would look on, on the handouts that they had, if you just wanted to see the very first one, just the clean all the blower motors, coils and condensers, just that is a wonderful thing for us. So, uh, yeah, I highly recommend that we, we get this done at no cost to the parish. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it then.
Got a motion by Mr. Jay and a second by Ms. Jill?
I just have one question, Chairman. They'll do all the schools even though we're not in Cleco, like in the energy district also, they'll do?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Any more, any more questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to approve Cleco Commercial HVAC Tune-Up Program project sponsor and customer agreement with Cleco and M3 Services. Approved.
Ms. Chairman? I move that we go into the executive session to discuss, uh, two items below, 35 and 36.
Got a motion to, by Mr. Robin, so go into the executive session? Anybody need a second? Got a second by Mr. Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Go on, let's see.